Welcome everybody to the November 23rd, 2020 meeting of Van Wert City Council. We'll begin with an invocation by Pastor Keith Stoller followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for the opportunity to come before you invite your attendance begun in this meeting. We're thankful, Heavenly Father, for the call to public service that you've anointed each of our council and members and administration. We're thankful, God, for those of the public who've made the time to attend this meeting and observe the transactions which are going on. We pray, God, that by your holy Spirit, you will provide wisdom and understanding and advice to the hearts of those who will make decisions and lead discussions. We also thank you, Father, for all the blessings of this past year as we approach Thanksgiving Day. But oh, Father, you are the giver of all good and perfect gifts. So we give you praise and honor and glory in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. I need everybody to bear with me. I obviously am without a clerk, so I will be doing the clerk duties as well. So attendance, Mr. Marshall.
Here.
Mr. Callis. Mr. Penton.
Here.
Mr. Egler.
Here.
Mrs. Murgie.
Here.
Mr. Hellman.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
I need a motion to, Mr. Callis informed me he wasn't going to be here at his parent teacher conferences tonight. I need a motion to, to excuse him. Mr. Egler, second by Mrs. Murgie. Mr. Marshall, I'm sorry, Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
And Mr. Davis?
Yes.
All right. Everybody was presented and should have in front of them a copy of the agenda for this evening's meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? We?
I have to be, pass up.
We have to. I'm sorry?
I have some tax issues to talk about tonight.
Okay.
Instead of add stuff.
Only council can add to the agenda. We will have an open, open issue that you'll be able to ask your questions.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve by Mrs. Murgie, second by Mr. Marshall. Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Callis? Oh, Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
And Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Before this evening's meeting, everybody was presented the minutes from our last meeting dated November 9th. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept by Mrs. Murgie, second by Mr. Hellman. Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
All right. Okay, comments, communications, petitions. We will start with me, then Mr. Mitch Price is on the agenda, and then you'll be up, sir, with your questions. I have, I have three things. First, I have a letter dated November 11th to the city of Van Wert from Sarah Zura, who's the secretary of Alexander and Bebaut. Says, please accept the utilities in place along Elk's Drive, which was dedicated to the city of Van Wert and accepted per resolution 2010-054 dated October 12th, 2020, and recorded October 23rd, plat 10, pages 192 through 194.
I just asked, sir?
Yes, I was gonna ask.
Resolution, not resolution, there's been a resolution prepared to accept the, the utilities underneath Elk's Drive.
Okay.
It's, it's to be discussed this evening.
So it officially hasn't been asked to be prepared?
It officially has not been asked to be prepared, but I have prepared in anticipation because of this letter.
Is it under?
Streets and alleys.
Streets and alleys. Streets and alleys. Street 68?
Street 68, correct.
Okay, you got that?
And, and just to tie that up, this is what I talked about once we did the plat, then we'll be coming back with the utility dedication, so that's, this wraps it all up tonight.
Yeah, and I'm just announcing, I got a letter, so I have to, you know, officially I have to announce it. Also, the clerk got a letter dated November 12th, 2020, from the Ethics Commission, State of Ohio Ethics Commission, or Ohio Ethics Commission, requesting Drew to provide a updated list of city elected officials. So Drew will take care of that, basically refer them to our website, send that off. The third thing, the last thing that I have is, everybody knows that we have Chromebooks in the back. I have, we purchased those with CARES dollars so that we, if we ever have to do Zoom again, everybody has, has that access. The other intention of those is to get rid of this kind of stuff. We just killed a whole bunch of trees tonight because we have a lot of ordinances, so ideally we'd like to move that way. I just wanted everybody to know that I have made contact with CNT out of Van Wert and I'm, I'm in the process of scheduling a date for one of, for their tech to come and set up everything for us. I, I don't really trust myself to do it, so I, you know, I, I wanted to make sure that it was done right the first time. So I am, all I'm doing is waiting on a, a date that CNT and myself can get in here together. Hopefully, we can get it, everything done sometime, you know, over December. That'd be my goal. Mr. Price? I guess anybody have any, any, any questions from, or any comments, communications, petitions from council? I'm sorry. All right, Mitch?
Just wanted to come in, thanks for having me. Update for our Main Street organization, give you the highlights of 2020. I'll try not to bore you with some stats, but obviously with COVID-19, the events have, we haven't had that many events. So just the highlights, we got a 14, a new wireless speaker system, hopefully everybody's heard that downtown.
Yeah, I have, I have a concern.
You have a concern?
It's not even Thanksgiving and you're already playing Christmas music.
I'm trying to bring joy.
That's ridiculous.
There's a rule. There's a rule!
I'm just trying to give, put everybody in a better spirit so they spend more money down.
I'm glad you brought that up, Mitch, thank you.
Yeah, so we, we've heard about, what's that?
There are Thanksgiving songs.
We've heard, I think, great compliments. We've had one when it was a little bit too loud, so we had to turn it down a little bit. So, but it's been a great addition. The nice thing about the speaker system, you can keep adding down by Truly Divine and those businesses, and it's wireless, so we can just keep, you know, doing our thing with that. The other highlight, 30 new hanging baskets. The flowers looked great this spring, fall, and summer. We had three family, or Ohio meat shops, 40 hours, they were watering them the whole summer, so they look great. Added a couple of things, Eugene Bagley Alley looks great. We got some Dylan Stosses, he's right there now, so he's, those guys have been using the alley quite a bit. New American flags donated by Martha Baggie and her family, so we really appreciate that. They look great. We've had, through this COVID, we've had a thriving business, The Wealth, if you haven't been in there, I give them a little bit of a plug. They are, they're really busy. They do teas and shakes, meal replacements, and energy teas. So Sarah Sheets is a great addition to downtown, very energetic. Of course, if you're selling that stuff, you better have some energy, so, but she's a great addition. And you can't, if you can make it through COVID-19, I feel like you can make it every year, so. Also, a beautiful sign in Fountain Park donated by Van Wert Rotary and Foundation. So to the events, obviously, we've canceled most of our events. We had Chocolate Walk in February, we had about 298 walkers on that, so that set the tone for us financially through the year, along with our other budget of items, too. We became a historic district, finally. That was, I think, five years in the making. I came in and kind of closed that. I've been the director two years. We didn't have the best design local, they were out of Columbus, they didn't do the best job, I just put that kindly, but we did get $8,000 back from them because we weren't happy with them. So hopefully, we never have to use them again, but it's done and it's, we never have to do it again. So we had Halloween, we had Third Friday events, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that. So a lot of Main Streets do a First Friday, Second Friday, we decided to do a Third Friday, we're still evaluating that. It's just about getting foot traffic to the businesses that have, you know, lost out on a lot of COVID, you know, when the shutdown happened. So we had one in September, had a great crowd. We had one in October, we were going against the fairgrounds, they had an event, and then we had one Friday, and it was, okay, people obviously nervous about getting out and, you know, with the uptick in COVID, so, but we had, we had people singing on our speaker system. The first one, we had Victoria Barnhart, Ben's daughter sang, she did a great job. The second one, we had Ryan Holliday, works at Lifehouse, and then Friday, we had Spencer Paul Camp, these local musicians, and they've done a great job, so. And we put them under the Marsh Hotel marquee right there, and they, we have a, the sound system plugged right in, it sounds great, so. And then our Halloween, just say a little bit about that, thanks for the city today. Ken, thanks for letting us shut down Main Street. We felt like that was a really safe event and really COVID friendly, so we had about 900 walkers, a little down from last year, but that's to expect it. For the most part, everybody followed the map. Always gonna have people that want to go the other direction, but I think for the most part, it was great, and got a lot of great compliments from that. Our social media page is at 4756 followers, and we just, other than our events, we've had a pretty good year. We're on pace to not do as good as we did last year, but with COVID, we've been, you know, fighting and clawing, getting some grants, eating, corporations have been great to us. They gave us $10,000 this year for hanging baskets and some speakers, so they've been great to us, and the foundation gives us a grant, the city's been great to us, and the county commissioners as well. So looking ahead, hopefully 2021, we do have events, we're just trying to do our best to have events, and that way we can, you know, it takes a big chunk of our budget, but we're looking into all the, you know, safe things we can do. We have Chocolate Walk coming in February, so if anything, we might just push it back to March, that way we can, you know, see what, see what we can do. Our goal is to have a safe event, and hopefully, we don't have to cancel any. We'd love to add more speakers, we'd love to add some bike racks throughout downtown, we'd love to add more downtown outdoor seating, I think that's gonna be really key to 2021, enhancing our events, getting some pop-up shops, take advantage of the Van Wert Fords buildings that are empty, maybe put some pop-up shops there, and then just continue partnership with the city and Van Wert Fords, so. That's all I have for updates.
Yes, John? You owe me a letter.
I sent it to you, email. Did you not get it?
When?
Uh, two days ago. I'll send it again.
I did not get it.
For a budget request?
Yes.
And I was gonna remind you of that.
Send it.
Yeah, I sent it to you, but I'll send it again, so, okay.
Yeah, please. CC Martha, just in case I don't get it. I'll check my, I'll check my spam or junk, whatever, but I didn't got, I did not get it.
As the leader of this organization, I feel like our momentum is off the charts, and I'm excited to see where we're gonna go. And I obviously, you know, COVID kind of put a little bit, you know, it didn't stop all of our energy, but we have a great board, and we have a lot of doers on our board, so I think the downtown looks great. Really appreciate the city helping us out when we need it. It's huge, it's a great partnership with the city and the county, and, you know, nobody's blinking an eye if I need help or something like that. For those of you that probably live under the rock, Van Wert Cougars won state last night, so downtown probably has as most people they've had in a long time, so. Mark Bagley Superintendent did a great job, he was the emcee last night on the speaker system. We were jamming out, and it was really cool, so everybody was nice out for the most part, social distancing as much as they could, so. There's some toilet paper still stuck to the street, but we'll get that cleaned up, and we try to do our best.
Might be able to sell that right now.
I don't know, it looks pretty dirty. Just a pretty cool atmosphere last night, that's what we needed, you know, to kind of end the year, and not that I'm tooting Main Street's own horn, but I will, the speakers just made a, a big difference, and we put them up when everything was shut down, and I feel like it's been nothing but positive, other than there's Christmas music going on.
Yeah, just keep that in mind for next year.
But I think next year, when the Van Wert Fords starts their project in April, I think the next one to, three to five years, our downtown's just gonna look, it's gonna look great, it's gonna, it's gonna look a lot different. So we're hoping to have a lot, some more restaurants and some more nightlife in there, so. Any questions to me? And I forgot, the Hometown Hero Banner, that's a program, Steve, you pushed me on that a little bit. We, we're gonna put up 20 Hometown Hero banners on South and North Washington, and then out by American Legion, AEP, I mapped it out, we're gonna put brackets on AEP poles, right now, we, we sold 12 in two weeks, so obviously, we think we're gonna sell out, and we're honoring those that, you know, were in the military, and the families are, it's a great Christmas gift, had someone come in and buy two of them this morning, so, Bertens is gonna make the banners for us. It's not a real big moneymaker for us, but that's not why we're doing it, so those are gonna be the same time we get our other banners up, you know, we're on from April, hopefully to Veterans Day, and at the end, the families get them, they get, keep them, and we switch them every year, so, just add to the downtown.
Excellent. Any questions from Mitch? Thank you, Mitch?
Thank you.
Sir, I need your name and address, please.
John Boer, 835 State Street.
Can you spell your last name?
B is a boy, O-O-H-G-R.
Okay, thank you.
About two years ago, give or take, a little bit of time, I was in here due to tax reasons. I kept on getting mask grams from Mr. Hatcher there, and anyways, he took me out in the hall, made copies, everything else. My wife made probably three or four visits to our tax department and asked them why we owe back taxes, because at the beginning of the year, we go to our tax lady, she does our taxes, she calls the city, okay, they tell us how much we owe, we write a check out for the year. Well, for some reason, all of a sudden, we started getting these nasty grams, saying, well, you owe this, you owe that. Okay, we pay that, we'll get another one, you owe this, you owe that. Why? Well, Mr. Hatcher told me he was gonna check into it, and mind you, this has been a year and a half, two years ago, and you guys kept me out here in the hallway, made copies, all this stuff and everything, okay. Didn't get any more letters, so I assumed everything was taken care of. Well, all of a sudden, I get a subpoena in the court, I'm getting sued by Mr. Hatcher for back taxes, for 700 and some dollars. Okay, I call up there at the tax department, hey, why do I owe this money? Well, we don't know, you owe it. Okay, then send me the records for the past five years of my income taxes. Well, she sent it to me, I went through it, back in 2017, they left her income out on my taxes. Okay, I owe the money, and actually, before I was writing in here, I'll write a damn check right now if I owe the money. Well, I send the money to the courthouse, they paid it. Well, two days later, then I get a $75 bill for court fees that I never went to, you know, I, I just want to know why this shit wasn't taken care of. You know, I mean, I'm writing all these checks out and this and that, why was it not taken care of? That's my question.
Okay.
And why was it not called? Why could they not tell me that, hey, we screwed up? It wasn't my fault, it wasn't the tax lady's fault because she calls the city. So the tax lady in the city screwed up, not me. So basically, I really gossed with you, I think the city owes me my money back.
Well, I'll let, you know, Mr. Hatcher, I'm sure can't answer your questions right now, but he is aware of it, and, you know, I'm sure.
I'll talk, I'll talk to the tax department about it, and I'll, I'll go through the records.
Right, I mean, I get tired of you calling a deadbeat. Well, when I was in here before, of course, he's not here anymore, Mr. Reserve, oh, well, thank you for paying your taxes, sir, that's what he said to me, shook my hand. Okay, yeah, I pay my taxes. Why am I getting subpoenaed in the court? Why am I getting my name in the paper?
Mr. Hatcher will review it, he'll, he'll talk, talk to the tax director.
You want my phone number, or you gonna actually do it this time, or am I gonna get a letter two years down the road saying I owe more money? That, that's my question. I'm not too happy about it.
I think you found me.
419-2030.
All right?
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments, communications, petitions? Administrative reports, Mayor, Mr. Ken Markward.
Thank you, Mr. President. Leave pickup has begun and continues Monday, December 7th is the last day to put out leaves. No plastic bags, and this is not a brush pickup, just a reminder of what's been going on here. And then an update from Stacy Adam about the Home Guard's temple demolition. It has begun, it kind of doesn't look like it very much, because they have to take it easy, and the way she put it, it's not gonna be flashy, there's not gonna be a wrecking ball or explosives, things like that. So they're going in gingerly removing things, part of it is because of areas that were unstable, and partly because the building immediately adjacent to it on the east is not to be destroyed. And so steady as she goes, but maybe by mid to late December, while the site won't be completely cleared away, it should be noticeably removed. Earlier this week, I was able to swear in Ethan Fraker as a firefighter, EMT, he's completed his one-year probationary period, so that was nice to have him on as a full-time employee there. And then lastly, as Mitch was mentioning, the Van Wert High School football team, I'd like to congratulate everyone that was involved in any way throughout the entire season. That's all I have.
I have a question?
Great, yes.
Is a proclamation in order for this specious occasion?
You want the home guard coming down?
No. No, the football team, our first championship. And number two, is it within our, I guess, can we put up a sign dictating the fact that we are champions? Like, most cities have.
You've seen how it places.
Yeah, I think that would, that's something that the city can do, or? Well, I, let's, I think that'll be worked out through the booster club and the parties, I, yeah.
I mean, we could, yeah.
Certainly assist in.
Location.
Locations and all that, yeah.
I mean, obviously, we could put up a metal sign on a, a stop sign, but I'd imagine there's probably going to be something a little bit more sufficient.
I feel the wheels turning already.
So, yeah, I just. I would take him a key ass. I would take you as one of your questions.
The home guard, they are, I mean, it's literally brick by brick, so.
Yeah.
And they're trying to save the awning on the front, a couple of areas, so, it may not look like they're doing a lot, but they are, so.
It kind of looks like they're up and then inside.
Yeah.
On, on some of the stuff.
A lot of looking around.
Yeah. Well, they have, I mean, per the contract, they have 60 days, right? And that 60 days started on the 15th or 16th of November? So, I mean, that, that's their timeframe.
I'm glad you said something about the weeds, and that I've been asking, couldn't answer. It used to be the, you first ward, you know, and then go to the second, then you had designated days, is it, is that no more, is it? You put them out and, and you're gonna go?
Yeah, it's been a number of years they switch, partly maybe it didn't take them a whole day to do them, I would say, just go ahead and go to the next one.
So just get them out, and there's no designated day for fourth, or third?
Last week, we made the rounds in two days.
The key is the last day, you gotta have them out by that last day. Or if you miss that, you're.
Monday.
You're on your own.
And then it may take them another couple of days to get around, but don't plan on putting it out on Wednesday the ninth, it may have already been bought.
So, so if there's any teenagers out there, you drive out to the north end, grab all those bags, it's a lot easier than it was when we were kids, right?
Wow. Don't know if you're setting a good example, but.
This Tomlinson's lame duck presidency here.
I had a, I had a request from numerous people on my street about potentially another brush pickup at some point, because we have the big wind go through after our last brush pickup. I've got, I'm, I'm fully staffed out front of the house. I'm, I'm ready for.
We're, I just, everybody needs to get it out, we're gonna try to make a pass here between the final leaf pickup, or, we're not, we're not sure of a date yet, but we're gonna make a pass, yes, before winter.
Just wanted to make sure that was in the works.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, Ken. Safety Service Director, Mr. Jay Fleming?
A short report tonight, I just want to report that the Franklin Street pump station project is completed, so both of our, we have two new pump stations in the city now. Secondly, I could not make the last meeting with the Ridge Township trustees, I rescheduled that for Wednesday morning to talk about that speed limit on Mendon Road with them, so I'll report back at the next council meeting how that transpires. Thirdly, the Moose Organization has purchased land to the south of them to put a parking lot in. Our ordinance requires a, a parking lot be constructed with a hard, dust-free surface. We don't think because of the location of this parking lot being completely off the street behind, that that's, that's an extra burden of cost that's not necessary in their case as an overflow parking lot. I'm just not sure, Mr. Law Director, it's not my place to waive that and say, don't, you're not required to do it, but I think some relief here would be in order.
Can they ask for a variance?
Form of a motion, it's not a variance item.
It's not?
No.
They're just asking to lay down stone.
Just do a stone parking lot.
It would have to be a motion passed by a majority of council.
I thought if the, the record should reflect that we all talked about it and agreed that it was okay to do that.
I think it would be analogous to somebody, you know, who comes in and asks for relief on a water bill, when they get.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Procedureally.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Any, we have a motion second, any questions, concerns from council? I mean, I'm assuming they're using like big rocks and not stone, or not?
Well, it'll be compacted aggregate.
Okay.
304, yeah, normal stone.
This is behind the building.
Directly. No, it's behind, to the back, back in the grass.
Yeah, it's basically unused space right now.
Yeah, okay, I was just trying to, just.
And I can tell you, as a past governor, it's gonna be blacked out, but it's, that's down the road.
Sure, sure.
Does Jeff Neid do abstaining? I don't know, not saying he does.
Well, I, I guess.
Well, that's, that's his call.
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't.
Yeah, that, that, that's your call, you, if you think you're biased one way or another, you can abstain, that's. We, there's no forcing you to abstain.
I will, I will abstain, my motion.
And I will, and I will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Penton, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hellman. Any other comments, thoughts? Okay, Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Abstain.
And Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
And that's all I have to report.
Any questions from council for the Safety Service Director?
One thing I forgot to have Joey, or Jay, point out is the ceiling.
Oh, oh, yeah, the ceiling's altered.
You may notice all the tiles are back in place, and heat is coming out of these three ends.
Good?
Just an update.
And in housekeeping, we are in the process of replacing all the water controls on all the fixtures in the restrooms is happening this week with our CARES money, so next time you come, you might be able to stick your hands in there and have no touch service.
Any questions from the public for the Safety Service Director? Thank you, Jay. Auditor, Mrs. Martha Baly.
Got a couple of things tonight. The first thing, I put copies at all your places of a then and now. I have two invoices that need to be approved. First invoice is from Fire Safety Services for air mask flow test for $3,547. And the second invoice is Shelley Company for $10,000, and that was to do the big patch on South Walnut Street there at Central's exit where we had a big water break. So, Mr. Egler, if you can ask for those to be approved during your report. Couple pieces of legislation. If you look at ordinance ending in 069 that has already been prepared, this is a transfer of hotel motel tax. Previously, I've done these quarterly. I just left it till the end of the year this year because it's, we didn't really need to have it in the fund to pay out what we needed to pay out. We need to transfer $49,80137 from the General Fund into the Economic Development Fund. That represents 100% of the 2020 share, and I discovered when I did this that when we did the fourth quarter in 2019, I did not transfer the correct amount, so there's a portion of that that is 2019.
Is...
Yes.
Is the first paragraph after the first whereas?
No, it is not.
It says 2019.
There you go.
And the roundabout.
So the amount and the date needs changed, right?
I got you.
Okay.
But while we're talking about the transfer of the hotel motel tax, we are considering the first reading of the annual appropriations tonight, which it does include funding for the airport and Main Street, which are funded from hotel motel tax, and Convention and Visitors Bureau. For 2020, we had a 27% reduction from prior year in what we collected in hotel motel tax, which we ended up distributing 19, just under $19,000 more than what we actually had collected, which wasn't a problem because we have about $100,000 cushion. The question is, going forward, are we going to fund Main Street and the airport at their requested amount? CBB also received a 27% less than theirs because they get a percentage of what we collect in hotel motel tax, and that's by the revised code. The airport, economic development, and Main Street are all funded by request. Economic development, we have an agreement with them to fund them at $80,000 a year. That agreement can be canceled by either party at any time, but that's a longstanding agreement. The airport and Main Street each make an annual request. The last couple of years, the airport has been 21,000 and Main Street has been 30,000. So I don't know if you want to talk about that or what we think we want to do going forward. I don't anticipate hotel motel tax going back up to their prior level in 2021. Don't know, but that's not the anticipation.
We briefly talked about this before, and at that time, you told us, and just if this is still accurate, you told us that we were okay for 2021 because of the carryover, but 2022 would be, if things didn't return to somewhere near normal, 2022 would be where we would not have enough money to fund everything at that rate. Is that...
My anticipation is we'll have about $100,000 cushion. So if we only distribute $20,000 more per year than what we take in, it would last for several years.
Okay.
But in my mind, it's not fair that CBB, who is the only entity that is required to receive a portion of the hotel motel tax, they take a big discount because of the taxes not being collected, but Main Street and the airport don't.
But that, but that doesn't prevent us from making up that difference for CBB?
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't.
I mean, in theory, we could voluntarily choose to...
We could.
Make them whole out of that...
We could.
Out of that cushion.
We could.
But what would we use as a baseline? Just an average over the last five years and say, "This is what we want to make it up to?"
That's, that's beginning to decide.
Or would we be better off to take the other two funds and rather than make them by request a dollar amount, put them on a percentage?
I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't mind seeing that.
We talked about that.
But not, we did talk about that, but I, they're, they're doing their budget right now for next year.
Right.
If the council, and I won't be here at the end of next year in 2022, but if the council wants to do that, I really think you should probably give them a fair warning, like a year, and say, "Hey..."
Well, they're making their request now. I mean, so, and the airport has requested 21,000. Main Street has not requested anything yet, but apparently Mitch has it in an email. So, I mean, they're requesting it to be either denied or approved.
I understand, but we, Ken?
Well, my thought was if we could keep those other set numbers set because we knew we had some cushion or carryover, and then let CBB get back to us because they have been aware that the hotel motel tax is down, and not that they want to see it go down, but through the year, they've taken that into consideration and some of their events, they've been able to not spend as much. So they may not be as hurt as we initially think, but I'd rather have them come to us asking for a portion back than to us to spend a lot of time deciding how to go about.
I think, I like, I think that's a good idea. I, I just, I know they've, they're just asking and we haven't passed our budget yet, but this, we've been giving them that amount of money for, for several years, and, you know, I've got to assume that they're counting on having the 30 and the 21.
Right. Well, as CBB was counting on having 45.
Well, and, and, you know, if CBB wants to come back and say, "Hey, can you make us whole and, you know, here's the amount that we would," I think we could consider that. But I would like, I would prefer, assuming the budget passes as is, that we just make it known to the other parties that, hey, as of the budget for 2022, council may consider a percentage rate rather than flat rates.
So who's going to notify them of that?
Couldn't that, and that could be a benefit to them, couldn't it? Because if we're going to go percentage, we have a boom year, you're going to give more money than what...
If we have a boom year, yeah.
Could be. And then you also need to decide, do you want to distribute 100% of what you take in?
I don't, no.
Or, I mean...
I know, but that's, you know, that's, we're a year out.
I think the fact that we just distributed more than what we took in, I thought it should be...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
And not on most of those organizations. I don't think they would prefer a percentage rate because they put in their request, they know they've got it, they're good for the year, but it's how it lies code that makes CBB a percentage rate.
Correct.
Yes.
We might never have chosen that if it was back to us. Because of the flexibility in there, I think in general, most people would rather have a set number.
I, I agree. I think we should just let them know that next year's budget, or not next year, 2022's budget may be calculated differently depending upon what happens with the hotel motel tax right now. And I think, I don't know that we need to communicate that to them other than asking the newspaper to identify that.
Once the budget's passed, I'll notify them. I'll just do that.
We just don't know what's going to happen.
Right.
I mean, if all of a sudden the hotel motel goes down to next to nothing...
Right.
You know, we would, we would in theory only have a year or two of, you know, one year of cushion left, which is not good for anybody.
Okay. So, next thing I have is last meeting, Mr. Egler had asked about workers' comp rebate, which I just got an email, oh, I guess I was writing my email today. We are anticipating on the workers' comp $5 billion back, we are anticipating an additional $231,000. We received $115,000 in April and $133,000 in November, so we will get 479, just under $480,000 as a rebate from workers' comp, which about 50% of that will be returned to the general fund. We redistribute that in the same proportion as what we pay workers' comp. So between that and the CARES Act dollars that we're going to use for police and fire salaries and fringe benefits, pretty much the losses that we have seen in income tax will be made up. So I think that general fund's going to end up in about the position that we thought it was going to prior to COVID. So that's, that's all good. The only other thing I have is I did receive the annexation packet from Alliance last week, so that has to sit for 60 days, which I didn't bring that date with me, but I'll make sure we know when that is.
You emailed it to me.
Yeah, it's either like the 17th or the 25th, Jay, or something.
It is the 17th, yes. And... You do have an ordinance for, salary ordinance for safety and service, which were requested last meeting. There's a third salary ordinance for the municipal court, which Mr. Hatcher had talked to the court, so Jeff, you'll need to ask for that one to be prepared. Ends in 070.
Okay. So Martha, your email to us said 60 days, hold till January 17th to council on 1/25. Do we need to have a meeting on 1/25 beforehand, a public meeting or anything like that, or do we just need John to prep an ordinance?
Can we do the public meeting while the 60-day period is...
I don't, I don't have to opt to look at that. I don't remember.
We'll pick that action the next meeting on that.
Yeah, we just need to know the dates that we're permitted to have a public meeting and then have it. I don't know if we have to wait.
The question is whether we can do the public meeting during the 60-day holding period, that's the question.
If not, since we have council on the 25th, we can, we can come in early on the 25th.
I think a lot of times we do it right before, I don't know.
I think we normally just do like a public meeting the day of and then, and then move.
We'll check that out.
Yeah, if you could let us know, for sure.
Yep. So that is all I have.
All right. Any questions from council for the auditor? The public? Thank you, Martha. Law Director, Mr. John Hatcher.
I don't have much to report. I think I said a lot during the Committee of the Holdup we had prior to council tonight. Just to let you know, you know, we are working through all the situations that come through court, whether it's traffic, criminal, code violations, anything civil that involves the city. Anytime there's a problem, you know, they can contact my office. I'm more than happy to work with people. I try to work with citizens as much as possible. I mean, you know, not every situation, you know, involves, needs to involve a prosecution, I mean, when there are other ways to fix a problem. So the public and please, in dealing with my office, we will work with you. Jeff, to work with us back, so, thank you.
And I'll take any questions, say if I have any. Any questions from council?
I have one. There was a request last meeting about an opinion that you were going to prepare. Did we get anywhere without the sunshine law issue that was brought forward?
The person involving the sunshine law never ended up contacting me.
Okay.
So that kind of, it's kind of died on the vine. Mr. Jay, if you raised your hand?
Yeah. Maybe Bill Marshall has a copy of the court record, but I think it's a general reaction. If, in the case towards a venture that's the offender and the property owner is evicting or attempting to evict, essentially if you deny due process, there's no, there's no relief for the property owner, especially if there's denied due process for an eviction. So I don't see how the city in good faith can continue to find a penalized. And I think that needs to be coded, it needs to be in the code.
It's something that can be looked at. I don't know, I don't know if I'd go as far as codifying that, but the discretion on whether to continue a prosecution is very much part of that.
It would be bad faith on part of the city to do it.
I'm sorry.
Well, that's, that's the definition of discretion.
Yeah. Yeah, the discretion to continue. Is it a good idea to continue? And it may not be.
Any other questions for the law director? Thank you, John. Committee of Reports, Health, Service, and Safety, Mr. Bill Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really have no report tonight. I will defer to the, our process that we had before the meeting and also to Mr. Hatcher's presentation of where we are. I will continue to work with Mr. Hatcher as we go forward with all of these issues that are before us, and there are several yet that are pending, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Health, Service, and Safety? Thank you, Bill. Economic Development, Mr. Calis is not here. Vice Chair is Mr. Penton.
Economic Development has no report tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Joel, because he certainly knows it? Thanks, Joel. Oh, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Joel Penton.
Parks and Recreation also has no report tonight, Mr. President.
There you go. Any questions for Parks and Recreation? Oh, there you go.
Hey, I mean, maybe for, any, anything on the park? Any, find out who destroyed the park, anywhere on that?
I was just going to ask the police chief before we got into that meeting tonight, and we, I didn't do that. No, I will have that for the next meeting. I mean, I know we got some people, but I don't know if they've even been to court yet.
Oh, okay. Any other questions for Parks? Thank you, Joel. Finance, Mr. Jeff Egler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few. First, I've got a then and now that needs paid for the Fire Safety and Services, Air Flow Mask, and Shelley Company.
Okay, then and now, motion to pay by Mr. Egler. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Murgie. Any questions? Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
And second, I have a, I'd like to have the law director prepare an ordinance to transfer funds from 101 to 215 and declare an emergency.
All right. Can you, okay. Corrected 069. Okay, motion to prepare. Mr. Egler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Murgie, seconds. Motion to prepare. Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
And Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ordinance has been prepared, it's ordinance 2011-069. I'd like to bring that to council for consideration.
Okay. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Murgie. Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Calis? Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Calis is not here. Sorry.
And this is only an emergency, so I'd like to suspend rules.
Okay, motion to suspend rules. Second by Mrs. Murgie. Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
And finally pass this on as 069 on its first and final reading.
Okay, pass on first and final. Second by Mrs. Murgie. Ordinance number 20-11-069, an ordinance to transfer funds from Fund 101 to Fund 215 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Egler?
Yes.
And Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
And Mr. Penton?
Yes.
And John, just remember those. And Mr. Penton?
Yes.
And John, just remember those.
I already have them.
John, you got there at the bottom too. You got the wrong name.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
And I'd like to have the law director prepare an ordinance to transfer funds from 550 to funds 101, 601, and 602. Can you put it out in emergency?
I think that one was passed.
That one, yeah, that one was already passed.
Yeah, it just needed reprint.
We just needed, that one's, we passed that one last time. That one just needed reprinted. You weren't here.
I wasn't here.
And there was a, there was a typo.
I printed off a new copy because I wasn't sure whether that was passed. I could tell from the minutes.
The title was duplicated from another ordinance. So I just need to sign the final version.
I knew that Erica has it.
Okay.
I printed it off several days ago. She has it.
Oh, okay. She asked us to come in and sign it anyway. So we're all good then. You don't need to worry about that one, Jeff.
I remember that now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I'd like the law director to prepare an ordinance providing for salaries and compensation employees in manageable court system and declare that as emergency.
Okay. Motion to prepare, municipal court?
Yes.
Yes, it's prepped at 070. Okay, motion to prepare, Mr. Agler. Second by Mrs. Murgie. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Agler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
And Mr. Penton?
Yes.
My, that ordinance has been prepared. It's ordinance 20, dash 11, dash 070. I'd like to bring that for counsel's consideration.
Okay, motion to introduce 070. Second by Mrs. Murgie. Mr. Agler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
And Mr. Penton?
Yes.
I'd like to suspend rules on this as an emergency.
We're going to, we're going to let this, this one's going to be, yeah, this is like the ones on the back. So we'll read first reading tonight. We'll do first reading of 070 down here at the bottom, and then we'll second and third, and we'll pass it on third and final before the end of the year.
Yeah, as an emergency, so it doesn't have to sit 30 days after passing, so it can be signed before January 1st. That's the intention.
Yeah.
I'd like to have the law director prepare an ordinance to establish water and sewer fees for the installation of new water meters in the City of Van Worf, declaring an emergency.
All right. Motion by Mr. Agler. Do I have a second? Mrs. Murgie, seconds. Just for clarity, were you going to say something or you want me to?
Well, I, yeah, I'm sorry. I was reading something and he jumped on that one, and I wanted to make a comment on this.
That's fine.
I hope it's not too late because he read that. But I would suggest that we, in line with other rating ordinances, that we say the ordinance to establish water and sewer fees for county year 2021, and then in the body discuss the fact that we're going to raise the minimum bill on both water and sewer by a dollar. I don't know that we need to specify that the water rate or the water meter portion of it, it's, unless counsel wants it in there.
That's fine. Like I said, I did this one kind of, this was, forgot to do it.
So you wanted to read an ordinance to establish water and sewer fees for calendar year?
2021.
2021, rather than that title?
And declaring an emergency.
Okay.
The only other comment I have is based on the software system and the ability to raise rates, it's, that dollar, that $2 increase is going to appear in the February bill. So I guess effective January, I don't know legally if we need to say effective February 1 or January 1 covers it, it's just going to come in that bill.
I think we're okay.
I think it's effective January 1st.
I think we're fine too. We have a weird thing in water because of the way we bill.
But we're allowed to charge people less than what we tell them. We can't charge them more than what the law says.
That's true.
That's correct.
So, good, good analogy.
We're allowed.
Yep, okay.
And I guess the question is that, do you want me to go back and include the prior table of all the water rates that are in the prior rate ordinances or just with this language in the body of it?
No, do the table. In fact, I'll hand you one after the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be good if it was all the same.
That's why, yeah.
So Jeff, we'll just ask for it to be prepared and leave it. And then we can bring it back later.
We can pass it next week, yeah.
So.
I'm asking for that to be prepared.
Okay, so motion to repair an ordinance to establish water and sewer fees for the calendar year 2021 on an emergency basis by Mr. Agler. Second by Ms. Murgie. Any questions? We'll see the whole ordinance next time. All right. Mr. Agler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgie?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
And Mr. Penton?
Yes.
And I'd like to ask the law director to prepare a resolution to appoint State Service Director to the District of Public Works Commission.
Oh, that's judiciary.
That's mine.
Judiciary, where am I?
Your lap. I don't know.
Rap, oh, Jeff, you're on hold. I'm on hold, I want to keep going.
Just keep going.
I know, I have one more. That might be done.
You're done. I think.
That concludes my report.
It's been long enough too.
Just let him go.
Any questions for Mr. Agler?
You've got clerk.
From counsel.
Clerk and counsel pay down.
I know, I'm going to bring that up, but I want to bring everybody else. Okay, as, okay, many, as most people know and many of you know, I'm not seeking reelection, so I feel comfortable bringing this up at this point in time. Several years ago, we looked at the average salary for mayor, law director, and auditor, and we adjusted those positions up. We looked at similar pay rates for everybody in Ohio, similar sized cities. Before I became president, the, and this was one person before me, so when Pete Weir was president of council, the president of council at that point, I think made, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, made $4,900 per year pre-tax, and council members made 45. We, we'd made it, it was discussed, and the reason I'm bringing this up now is we have, since people are going to be running in the primary, they have to get their signatures if they want to run on any seat in here.
Next month.
Next month. Okay, they have to try those signatures in by the beginning of February. Now, I don't know the exact date, but the beginning of February. Okay? So it is our job to, if there are, if we're going to propose any changes in salary for elected positions, and that would just be the two-year positions plus the treasurer, that we address it before the primary. We have had, so it's been at least six years since the salary for city council and president and treasurer have been, have been looked at. And during the, during the run-up to the election specifically related to the charter commission, we were asked a couple different times, how much does city council pay? Why don't we get more people to run for city council? That type of, those types of questions. Okay, so I've addressed how much city council presently pays. President makes $5,500 per year pre-tax. Council members make $4,900 pre-tax. Clerk makes the same as a council member, $4,900 pre-tax. And treasurer makes?
$2,000.
$2,000 pre-tax. I would like council to consider, I would recommend that council consider looking at the average rate for council members, president, clerk, and treasurer for cities our size, our size. One, the next council, you know, I don't like underpaying people, especially on purpose. We have, you know, I know we don't have a lot of money, but, you know, we're not talking about a lot of money for council salaries, not like big cities where it's an actual full-time job. And two, the low sal, and all of you know this, the low salaries that we get, I think can be a roadblock for certain people, and they, they, we may get more interest in city of Van Worf, people running if the salary were more commensurate with other cities our size. Now, to begin that process, Mr. Davis had, you know, polled, asked, I think you asked the auditor, correct?
Right, yeah, I got a report from Martha that the Ohio Municipal League puts out, I don't know if it's annually or whatnot, but they, they put together a report of cities in their membership. They break it down, statutory charter, every position you can possibly imagine, every city calls Jay's position something different. So they, they break it down based off of all that and what, what cities pay those positions. And we're close to average on most, but the clerk's.
Well, we're below average.
We're below average.
We're below average.
We're below average. The clerk's position is probably the one that stood out the most.
Yes.
As being, I'll say grossly underpaid, for the amount of work that he does.
So Mike, so our, when, when Mr. Davis and I talked, then the, this is why I'm doing this, because this isn't going to benefit me whatsoever. I, and I, I don't know who's all rerunning. I know some of you will, but, you know, there are certainly, many people can run. This is why I feel comfortable having this conversation now, because it's not benefiting me personally. I would make a recommendation, or I would like council to make a recommendation, to look at the Ohio Municipal League actual numbers, the averages, and move the president to the, the average, the median, the, and council members, and the treasurer to the median. And we'll have to look at the treasurer for sure, because that, that, they're usually.
You can't compare that to.
Right, it's usually you, right?
No, well, in some, in some municipalities, the treasurer is actually a person who comes in and works.
Yes.
Our treasurer comes in once a month, goes over the bank reconciliation, and maybe takes a half an hour.
Yes, I know. So I, I don't, that's why I said.
When you talk about looking at the average, the average of what? Everything? Are you, I mean, every, everybody that's in the municipal league?
No, the same size.
Yeah, we broke down.
We broke it down.
We went with like a, with a standard deviation from the average.
So basically they.
From our, from our population.
By population.
Up, up 10%, down 10%, give the average of that or whatever.
You sent me those numbers.
I have it. So for city council, the, the average is going to be somewhere between 5,500 and 7,500. I mean, somewhere in that window.
Okay, so, just, so you guys, and I don't know that we need to be at the top end of the average, but I, I think there's a, it's, it's the time that we should at least look at the salaries. But, and this is, this is me, this position works twice as hard as everybody else in here except for the full-time people. Okay? This position is, and that, the part of the, and probably a part of the reason, because I'm not real fun to work with, but another part of the reason is this job really has a lot of responsibilities.
Let me just throw something out here. When Pete Weir was council president, he wanted to raise the salary of the clerk. We looked at how many hours a week with the discussion with the clerk.
Sure.
And determined that if, that at the current rate, which I, I think was lower than what it is now, they were making more per hour than our highest-paid secretary.
Okay, I, I'm not asking, I'm just saying we need, I think council needs to look at.
I'm just thinking, I'm not fair.
I just want council to look at it and consider.
And just so you know, the clerk's wages are in the salary ordinance. So if you're going to change that, it has to be, it has to be in the salary ordinance.
Okay. Okay, so, like, that's my pitch. I don't have a dog in the fight. I can't motion for anything to happen. I just wanted to bring that up before the end of the year, as we start considering whether or not those in this room are going to run for a position, rerun for a position, and the members of the community. I, I would like to see a, a review of the salaries for individuals.
Martha, in your opinion, what are we looking, I mean, are we going to put ourselves up against something if we, if we raise things budget-wise? I mean, do we have, what do we have available to do with? I mean, are we going to hamster ourselves?
I think when you're giving your employees a 2.5% or 3% increase, if you give your council people more than that, I think that looks bad.
You think, you think this?
My personal opinion is it won't make any difference how much you pay for council to get more people to run. That's my personal opinion. But other than that, I, I think, I, I do think if, I do think if you make it more than 3%, the employees are not going to be happy, because they consider council members to be an employee just like they are, so.
But do they get, do they get 3% yearly?
Yeah, but I would count.
It just, no, no.
So, I mean, how long has it been since the council has had?
I had that on.
So when, just, so just, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but when we, when we did this analysis for the mayor, the auditor, and the law director, our argument was, we can go above that amount, we can go above 3% at that time, because our argument was, we hadn't raised the mayor's salary in X number of years. That was our argument, to justify bringing the mayor's position up to a dollar amount that we were comfortable with.
And that wasn't this term, that was?
No, no, but, but that was the justification.
Correct.
Is that we hadn't, we hadn't raised the mayor's position for four years, so if you assume 2% for four years, you know, 1% for four years, then, you know, I can make a case that we increase it 8%. That was the justification back then. Mr. Agler?
Well, when you're talking about percentages, 3% of $60,000 and 3% of $4,000, the, how, that's, that's pretty, you know, a guy making 50, 60,000 a year, getting a 3% raise shouldn't be mad about a guy getting a 3% raise is making 4,000 a year. That needs to see again, that's not comparable. You're not comparing apple with apples.
So my argument would be to look at the lower end of the average, and I would recommend that be the, the thought process of the starting point.
Just wanted, do you remember, give or take, about three years ago, you were proposing salaries for council be cut?
Yeah, I actually proposed that everybody work for free. I remember that, and everybody said no.
I just wondered, that's like the opposite now.
Oh, I know.
Okay, just checking.
I mean, I, we're allowed to change our mind.
We couldn't, you couldn't get us to cut it, so we lost the race.
I don't have a dog in this fight either, because I have decided not to run again. But my opinion is, even if I was running, that I don't know anybody here, certainly not me or you or anyone, is doing it for the salary. So I don't think that increasing the salary is going to do anything to encourage people to run. Maybe, maybe it will, but I just suspect it won't, and with the current budget and tax revenue situation, I don't think it's a good idea for council to raise their own salary.
Okay.
Just my opinion.
And, well, and we do have to consider, part of the reason that the employees are getting an increase, when we had a drastic decrease in income tax, which is what we're basically funded by, is the bargaining units were already completed with negotiations before COVID hit. So if the three unions were getting an increase, because of their, all three of our bargaining contracts were negotiated this year, they all three got an increase. So we also budgeted an increase for the non-bargaining unit employees, which is a small group of employees. But had those contracts not been up for negotiation prior to COVID, I don't think we would have seen any increases.
Probably not, no. We'd probably seen a one-year contract.
Yeah, yeah. When you have a half a million dollar difference in your income tax collections, it's hard to say, yeah, we're going to give pay increases. I mean, I, it's hard to justify. And, and like I said, this year, the general fund's going to end up probably as good as it was last year, but that's because we got almost half a million dollars from the CARES Act and almost the same from workers' comp, which in 2021, I'd say we're not going to see either one of those. And what's going to happen with the income tax, I don't know.
The only reason, the only reason I'm bringing this up now is because I'm not running again. And I know I'm going to get, you know, Facebook, people probably aren't going to talk nice about me. But I.
Wait, did this stop?
Hmm?
Did this stop?
Well, no, they've, they've focused on somebody else for the last couple of weeks, and then they'll, they'll come back to me now. At least, at least I've been told, somebody keeps sending me screenshots of, of things off Facebook.
My, my opinion is, I, I think as, as the city goes, and, and, I don't, I don't have anything against anybody up here, but I think as, as the city goes, and if you want to start to attract young people to take an interest in this, to take time away from their families, and to take time away from what they do to take an interest in this, you've got to make it worth their time, because they're, they're looking for other ways to make money. And I'm not saying this is a bad gig, I mean, when you figure out the hours you put in for the time and the pay, it's, it's good, but as, as a 33-year-old person, I've got a one-and-a-half-year-old at home. I could be spending three hours every Monday, or every other Monday, with him, and all the other time dedicated to research and, and making phone calls and talking to Mr. Marshall for an hour here and there, and, you know, things like that. So just, it's, it's not, it's not all, it's, it's not all people who have, who've been in your seat for five years, 10 years, however long you guys have been on, on council, to get younger people to take an interest, you've got to dangle a carrot. And I didn't know how much is paid when I started, I had no idea. I, I wanted to do it, because I wanted to do it, but I don't think there are a lot of people out there like me that are like that, my age. I think a lot of people my age, they, they want to be paid for their time, and they want to be paid well.
All right, just, those are my two cents.
But what, John, we need to have that passed by the end of the year? Hatcher?
Yes.
Okay. And like I said, the clerk is in the salary ordinance.
I understand. Yep. Okay. Judiciary and annexation, this is Joy Murgy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to ask about this ordinance that I have about the Alliance Property Group. Did I request this? I don't have it, I don't see it in the minutes. It's asking for, to accept a proposed zoning.
Oh.
There was some discussion about that, exactly, we talked about it last time.
I don't think she was here last time.
Were you not here last week, or like, two weeks ago?
I was, but it wasn't in the minutes that I asked for it.
Oh, oh, no, you didn't. You know, you need to ask for it.
That's, that's what.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. So at the last meeting, we discussed that the property owned by Alliance Property Group, that they wished the property to be zoned as I-2 pending annexation. So I would like to ask that an ordinance be prepared to accept this proposed zoning for that property on an emergency basis.
Okay, motion to prepare, second by Mr. Egler. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Egler, Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
The law director has prepared ordinance 2011067. I'd like to introduce this ordinance before council.
Okay, motion to introduce, second by Mr. Egler?
Yeah.
Just so I don't have to make more marks. Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Since it's always prepared on an emergency basis, I'd like to make a motion that statutory rules be suspended.
Okay, motion to suspend, second by Mr. Egler or Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And finally, I'd like to make the motion, ordinance 2011067 be passed on its first and final.
Okay, motion to pass on first and final, second by Mr. Egler, ordinance number 20-0-11-067, an ordinance to accept the proposed zoning for the property owned by Alliance Property Group LLC pending annexation and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Also, at the last council meeting, I had asked that a resolution be prepared to reappoint the Safety Service Director to the District 13 Public Works Commission. The law director has prepared resolution 2011072. Like to introduce that before council.
Okay, motion to introduce, second by Mr. Egler. Correct, our, our, what?
I have discussion before you call the roll.
I was going to ask if this, if we're actually running this all the way through?
No, it does not need to be an emergency. 30 days, fine.
Okay.
But we need, let's, I don't know if we have to need to amend it or not, it, it needs to say, I think in the title, we need to add in the mayor as the alternate.
Okay.
And in the first whereas, call me out by name and call Ken out by name as the alternate. And wherever else that's appropriate.
Are you okay with those additions?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll see this next time, we're just introducing it, and then I will read it for the first one, first time, so Jay, when we get there, you're going to need to coach me through that one, too. Okay, so we have a motion to introduce, Jay has identified language differences that'll be in the title, we'll see that be updated once in two weeks. Okay? So Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
And Mr. Davis?
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Okay, any questions for judiciary and annexation in public? Thank you, Joy. Streets and alleys, Mr. Steve Hellman?
I've got one item. I would like to make a motion for the law director to prepare a resolution as an emergency for accepting the dedication of Elk's Drive and accepting the utilities.
Okay, under, so, motion to prepare resolution for Elk's Drive declaring an emergency. Mr. Hellman, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Egler. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
And Mr. Penn?
Yes.
The law director has prepared resolution number 20-11-068, and I would like to introduce this.
Okay, motion to introduce 068, second by Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
And it was prepared as an emergency, and I'd like to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend, second by Mr. Egler. Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, resolution number 20-11-068 be passed on its first and final.
Okay, pass on first and final, second by Mr. Egler. Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Murgy? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penn, I'm sorry, I forgot to read it. Sorry. Resolution number 20-11-068, a resolution accepting the dedication of Elk's Drive and accepting the utilities thereunder, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for streets and alleys? Council, in public? Property and equipment, Mr. Andrew Davis?
Property and equipment has no report this year.
Okay. We had a very lengthy meeting, council of the whole, on code enforcement. I will prepare those minutes and have them to everybody by the time next meeting comes around. Are there any new business to come before council? Jay?
This is new business, because I just got this, the mayor and I, he probably hasn't seen it yet, but this is an email from the mayor of Kenton. I'll just read it real quick. Shout out to the city of Van Wirt and the entire Cougar community, state champions. Please know the city of Kenton is beyond excited for your community. We applaud your ability to overcome a crazy year and stay focused on the ultimate prize. Again, congratulations, Mayor Lynn Webb, city of Kenton.
Oh, damn, great. Thank you. All right, we had.
I had something, new business. You and I had talked about the charter, and you were going to send an email off to.
Uh, yes, uh, yes, I have not, so, Mr. Davis asked me to reach out to Gary Hunter and ask if council wanted to put the charter on a ballot in 2021, again, what are the dates that we need to be aware of? I have posted that out to Gary Hunter, he said he was going to get back to me, I have yet to receive the actual dates yet, but thank you for reminding me.
Well, just for everyone's, the primaries in May.
May 4. May 4.
May 4?
Okay. They, you won't find that anywhere online, though.
Good enough.
They haven't, because they haven't put anything out on it yet. I had to dig and dig and dig to find it.
Well, I guess, I don't know, do we need to have a meeting for the, if that's going to be in the salary for the clerks? We need to have a, before the end of the, what we're going to do here, which.
That needs to be passed for the end of the year.
Well, we want to have a meeting. I'm going to have a, and since it involves all of us, instead of a finance meeting, I'd say maybe a whole, I mean, all of us are going to vote on it anyway, so.
So that's.
Maybe a 15-minute meeting.
This clarifies just the clerk that has to be done before the end of the year.
Well, the others still have to be done by February.
The others have to be done by February.
You might have another one. Yeah, so I, yeah, I think we need to have a, next meeting, 15 minutes is enough to discuss. You think?
That'd be enough, I'll do some digging on that research document, and I can send you, I can send it out to everybody, that way you guys have it and can do the same thing.
Well, and the clerk's going to be like the treasurer, hard to determine, because many of the council clerks that I know are city employees, I mean, full-time city employees.
Right, and it breaks, that chart breaks it down. It has, it has clerk of council, and then it has full-time and part-time, and you just go down, and it tells you what city, what their population is, and what they're paying their clerk, if they're part-time, full-time. So you can use the information to, to help put that together if you want to.
All right, so we already have a 15-minute public meeting before, before the next council.
Because we're three weeks now, aren't we? We got a two-week gap.
That might, that might be on the annexe.
Yes, it is on the annexation.
And that won't pay 15, though?
No, but we have it already scheduled for 6:15, so if you want time, we can, we can, we can come in at 6 o'clock on the 14th.
6 o'clock, all right with everybody?
Here.
Yep.
All right. We have nothing on the consent agenda, we have several things on the reading of resolutions and ordinances. Okay, ordinance, all, all of these are first readings. Ordinance number 20-11-064, first reading, first reading. An ordinance amending ordinance 20-04-025, providing for the salaries and compensation of employees in the service department, auditor's office, income tax, and administration of the city of Van Wirt, establishing job classification, salary ranges and limitations, authorizing specific number of employees, providing for sick leave, vacation schedule allowances, immunization against communicable diseases and other benefits, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 20-11-065, an ordinance amended ordinance 20-04-020, amending the salary ordinance, safety department employees, providing for the salaries and compensation of employees in the police department and fire department, non-bargaining members of the city of Van Wirt, establishing job classification, salary ranges and limitations, authorizing specific number of employees, providing for sick leave, vacation schedule allowances, immunization against communicable diseases and other benefits, and declaring an emergency. 65. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
And Mr. Davis? Okay. Ordinance number 20-11-066, an ordinance to make permanent appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Van Wirt, Ohio, from January 1, 2021, to December 31, 2021, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cal? Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
070.
Thank you. 070. Ordinance number 20-11-070, an ordinance providing for the salaries and compensation of employees in the municipal court system, for the Van Wirt Municipal Court, establishing job classification, salary ranges and limitations, authorizing specific number of employees, providing for sick leave, vacation schedule allowances, immunization against communicable diseases and other benefits, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?[1645.83]